Okay, I would like to call this virtual meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission to order. Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven thirty P M. The seating of members will be our regular members Elaine Curly, Kim Tester, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. And at this point, I remind everybody, this entire meeting is being recorded. Keep that in mind. Public comment, my agenda shows none. So we move on to approval of minutes of our public hearing and regular meeting. We'll do the public hearing first November ninth. And everybody has a chance to see those. And you can kind of let me know when you're ready after you checked them out.
I had a question. The minutes indicate, this is Kim, the minutes don't indicate what the public hearing was about. So should there be just sort of a title? You know, because I'm reading.
Yes, I usually do put like a purpose line in there, and I guess I did not do that, did I?
Yeah, I just kind of was like, oh.
No, you're right. I think I think that should be added.
Okay, I'd like to make a correction on the last sentence under motion. I am erroneously listed as seconded, seconded. I wasn't present.
No, it says Miller.
Oh, I think Elaine, I think you might be on the regular meeting. We're on the public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Okay, there's two sets.
Okay.
When we get to that, I will.
Okay, sorry.
I will take your comment.
Okay. Are we good with the minutes of the public hearing with the correction? To that Kim mentioned, to identify basically the purpose.
Yeah, I so I motion that we accept the minutes to the November nine public hearing for adaptive use of warrants with addition of the information on what the public hearing was about.
Correct. Do I have a second?
A second.
Alan second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One abstention?
Elaine abstains.
Okay, the minutes are good. Now we'll go to the minutes of the regular meeting. Little more involved, but not too bad.
I just had, this is Kim, I just had two things. One, it should indicate regular member absent. That would be
Elaine.
And then under communications line. With the end of the census, it distributed of the meeting packets instead of he packets.
I'm sorry, where are you, Kim?
Under communications toward the bottom.
Oh, at the very end. Okay.
It says, right under the communications, it has been distributed as part of the meeting packets.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought I caught that one. I guess I didn't. Okay, I saw that actually when I was.
Yeah, but that's it.
Okay.
Good.
And then their motion.
Oh, yeah, then we have Elaine who's making a motion and she wasn't there.
Oh, right. Right.
I probably needed that because we didn't have a second. Just kidding.
She was there in spirit.
I'll figure out who the second was. And add that if it's okay.
Okay, yeah. All right, if everybody's good with the minutes of the regular meeting, I would like a motion to approve.
This is Kim, I'll motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting with amendments with with the additions or corrections.
Dave Miller, I second it.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
One abstention, Elaine.
More in favors? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Got them all, Karen?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, okay. All right, item four on our agenda accessory apartment tax amendments. That's a placeholder for our public hearing in January. We were all set to go on that and to have our public hearing and see what people think. So that's for January next month. That brings us to continue discussion of proposed amendments to our parking regulations. And we have in our packet and you have online the suggested the changes. And maybe John Cody could fill us in a bit more?
Oh, yeah, it's John Cody. The basic change, there's only two changes to our parking regs for Zone D that this applicant asked for us to do. One of them is for the parking lots where currently we have thirty five feet between each parallel parking spot as for the lane to drive through, which seems excessive. They did some research and they came back that most of the towns and areas around the state only.
We lost you, John.
And the stuff. The other change is
We we lost you. You have to repeat that.
Oh, wonderful. Basically, basically what the change is, is our our regulations have thirty five feet between parking spots, parallel parking spots in the Zone D parking regs. They would like to cut that back down to twenty four feet. Twenty four feet seems to be the standard across the state. It's in most of the towns, most of the business areas, et cetera. The other change for this that was brought up is thirteen point three two is just to remove required parking facilities shall be located on the same lot as a building or other use which they serve. The reason why they want to do that, we believe, or so they led on to, is where the current vet building is, there's a parking lot there. They may want to incorporate that in their plan when they do submit it. But if they do go that route, it'd be a lot easier to have this already prepared for them.
Sorry, John, this is Elaine. I missed, who requested the change?
The people who owned the the old Stewart's property.
Okay.
The veterinarian.
Yep.
So does that affect anything else in the future? Does it really? I mean, if there were no parking available on a piece of property in the business district? And they wanted to park, they just have to get permission from a property, a budding property owner.
Exactly. So that's why it's kind of moot to have that in our regs because they couldn't do it without permission, without an easement or such.
Okay.
What about any other part of town, John?
It's Zone D specifically.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes, Dave Miller here, it it seems to me to make perfect sense. The the original plan was enormous parking spots that that I don't know, it didn't make any sense at all to me.
This Kim, I agree.
Yeah, I'm I'm with it as far as the thirty five going to twenty four. Yeah, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with thirteen three two where you can be allowed to park on another lot, somebody else's property to serve your business, even though the property owner gives you permission. I know it's Business Zone D is pretty tight and there's not a whole lot of stuff going on. But I kind of, you know, required parking facility shall be located on the same lot as the building for other use which they serve. Kind of makes sense. They're gonna have to get obviously permission from the neighbor to park in the neighbor's backyard to use your business.
It would have to be a deeded, an easement, a deeded easement, something along those lines.
Yeah.
You know, I'm filed upstairs with Jimmy.
Yeah.
That could be expanding the business zone into
Properties, property size is the property size.
And Dave Miller here, the parking area is is currently there already on that that lot with the house where the where the clinic is presently. So it wouldn't be any change. It would be just accepting it as it is.
This is Kim. So when I'm looking at the regulations, I'm thinking about not just the people who are interested in it, but any any other property that's in Zone D. So I mean, of course, it makes sense for their use, but it's just thinking ahead of what could happen in other areas. I don't know, does it matter if we leave thirteen point three point two and just add a statement about unless there's permission or unless there is a
We wouldn't be able to grant something that's not permissible in our regs.
Are we going to restrict that extension hat still has to be within the business zone?
Yeah, it's strictly for Zone D. There's only three.
You can't, you can't leave this park outside of the zone. You're trying to park on somebody else's property within the zone.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, it's it's all good with the current situation because they own both properties, even though they're separate properties, they own both of them. So if you want to park at the existing one and walk across the yard to the brand new one, that's not a problem. I don't I don't know.
The one thing I can't speak on an application because we don't have one, but I have seen the plans and my idea, the rationale behind this, because there's going to be some large vehicles going in there, trailer, no trucks and trailers, et cetera, like that. And their traffic pattern that they have does a loop. So you're not going to have any congestion or anything like that. They have specific trailer parking and I don't see how you'd really be easily back those around and turn around, go out the same way you came in.
No, I don't have a problem. I want to encourage this. It seems to me that in the the situation that I've seen down there, they could do this without even deleting thirteen three two.
I'm looking at their, it's not an official submission, but what they gave me and it requires it.
Well, then maybe they should consider about lot line revision and joining the two parcels.
Well, the reason why they really can't do that is because it's two houses, one's nonconforming. Planning would never let them change that house in there. And in the future, who knows if they ever want to sell off the existing clinic to a different enterprise, different business. They could never go back and cut that off because there's no, you can't create a new.
So when they, when they do sell that off, they lose that that circle parking.
Uh, no, they could have that in a written easement with the new buyer. All that can be negotiated amongst themselves.
It's a stretch.
If they're their own property, then a new buyer would most likely accept that easement.
Well, may I ask, this is Elaine, is there any offense committed if they remove the two lilac bushes that are on the border separating the two properties and utilize that as a pass through for a vehicle?
I don't know anything.
Clearly done. They're doing it now. They're pretty much parking on the other side of the shrubs and walking into the clinic.
Okay.
So if it's a private matter, just by simply removing some shrubs, they would have the opportunity to utilize a fully circular traffic pattern if they wanted to. I don't think there's any prohibiting that, are there?
I think this can go either. I mean, really, nobody's going to use the neighbor's property for parking unless the neighbor says it's okay.
Yeah.
So What's the property line and the other part of the lot paves up to the park, the property line?
And most likely, yes. Again, I don't have a formal application. So I can't say they're going to do this, they're going to do that. I just have a rendering of what their anticipated application would be.
I'm just kind of looking at what might happen in the future with not this property, but the distillery and its neighbors and stuff like that.
Would have to go through some houses or front yards. But if you look at any other commercial district around, you go to Brookfield, Waterbury, God forbid, any of those, almost all the commercial buildings have interlocking parking lots. If you want to get, go to the the pizza store, I wouldn't be surprised if they connect to that parking lot to go through just to make it ease of traffic and going on sixty seven and off sixty seven to travel a hundred yards.
All right.
True. That's true.
Yeah.
But but this is Route sixty seven. This isn't Route eight or Main Street Woodbury. This is Route sixty seven. And we're talking about a veterinary clinic and hospital, not a supermarket.
You're talking about a pizza shop, a package store, a distillery, a veterinary hospital, a business district. Yes.
No, I can, I can see what John's saying. There's no reason, I can't, I'm thinking this through as everybody is speaking and I'm listening. But I mean, I mean, what's the big deal if they're connected?
Because
My take, as long as there's granted easement, it's logged with the town clerk's office. I don't think there's any concern.
No.
Well, I believe there's a concern, excuse me, I'm sorry, Elaine speaking. I believe there's a concern because they're not the singular business that would be affected. It would be all the business district that's affected.
Yeah, but each each individual property owner or each individual business has the ability to
Yes or no?
Or close it down.
If they don't want it, they don't do it. It's your property.
Or twenty years from now, they can put a, put a fence in there and then end it.
Because what we're saying is you could pull into the parking lot for the package store and the pizza place and take your cat carrier and walk across the lawn to the vet clinic.
That's right.
And what's wrong, what's wrong with that?
The distillery could turn around and host an event and gain another fifty parking places.
No, 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 that's that's impossible. That is a site plan for the distillery. Like this site plan, there's designated parking spots. There's there's X amount. There's
Yes, but what you're saying, John, is by agreement, you can, that by personal agreement, private agreement between two businesses, that can be arranged to utilize other parking spaces. Is that right?
The business will have a set amount of parking via the site plan as stated in our regulations. It's Zone D. If you want it to grow, then it's up to you guys.
So, Kim, so by, John, you're saying that by removing thirteen three two, it does not change the original requirement for the maximum parking. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Again, everything's through a site plan. So all that could be ripped apart and digested through the commission at that time.
Okay, but by by removing
And parking, parking regs are strictly going to stay the same except for the parking lots and the and that thirteen three.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. No, I think these two properties are gonna you know, work together fine for
Yeah, I could see the future. It's it's the same, it's the same property. It's
Yeah.
You know, they're not going to dismantle the small portion for the bigger portion. It's just not logical. They've got too much money in there.
Yeah, exactly. I agree. Okay.
Forgive me, I I asked a question and I'm not sure that I received an answer. And if somebody could explain it to me, that would be great because I'm a little confused. If, in fact, they went out and shoveled out two forsythia bushes and created a pass through, would they be in violation?
I think, John, don't they have to have, in order for one business to be able to use the other parking from another business? Right now, it's not allowed because of that thirteen three two. Is that correct?
No, I mean, you can park and right now you could park anywhere. I could park at the package store and walk to the distillery. You know, there's no restriction. That's under the property owner. If they want to put a restriction, they'll no parking them for whatever, so be it.
Okay.
It would actually be a convenience if you could, you know, I, you know, when you're in a when you're down on another area in a different town, it's quite convenient if three businesses in a row have their own parking spaces, which you can get from one to the other without having to go out on the main drag.
I agree with that also because you're going to have an entrance and an exit. Not in the same thing. You're, all traffic pulling in will be in one spot, coming out will be the same or a different spot. I mean, I'm not a professional in that by any means, but it certainly makes sense to me. If I'm on Route sixty seven, I'd rather go in one way and out the other as opposed to a combination of the two.
Okay.
Dave Miller, that that makes perfect sense to me. And you could park your car and visit two or three different places and walk. It makes perfect sense.
This is Kim. So I have a question. Is it necessary to delete thirteen three two then?
Yes.
Okay.
They they own the small existing clinic.
Yep.
Which is which is going to be the most likely exit route for that parking area.
Okay. But don't we still want to make sure there's required parking facilities located in the same lot as the building?
There are. There's parking facilities for the small clinic. There's, right now, I'm looking at forty seven parking spaces for the main one, which we're talking about that because one of them needs to be changed. There's trailer parking behind it. There's it's an extensive plan. I wish I was able to share it, but it's not a submitted thing. It's just math that they dropped off a while.
May I ask you, John, this is Elaine, if Brad, let's say Brad decides to convert the property in the back into parking spaces? And he leases them out to all the other businesses. Does that not?
Any business, every business every business is required to submit a site plan and X amount of parking spots according to the size of the building. So if he goes beyond that, that would be illegal. You would have to approve what he's allowed to do.
So what it is, folks, is the small vet clinic has an allowed number of parking spaces. The large vet clinic will have an allowed number of parking spaces. We're just going to have a drive through. The parking spaces aren't, to my understanding, aren't going to increase. We're just making it easier to come in and go out.
I, this is
Actually, they're going to be reduced in the little one, but yes, you're correct.
Okay.
This is Kim. So I guess I just want to clarify that there, this isn't the only place in the regulations that stipulates that there has to be parking in for a business.
This is strictly in the Zone D regulations.
No, 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 I'm talking about that. Because what it just, it says required parking facility shall be located on the same lot as the building or other use which they serve. So without that statement, it's, we're allowing no that parking could be on a different lot if if of the person gives permission to use that.
That's correct. They would have to have permission from the property owner, like, like right now, if I wanted to park on Jim's lawn, he can tow my car.
I know, we're talking but but I still think that we, if the, if that lot with the main, I I've seen the drawing, so I know, I know, I understand. You don't have to explain that to me. So we should still be, where does it say, though, that that parking spaces are required for that particular lot? That's all.
I I I see what you're, I think that
Do what I'm driving at?
Yeah.
I do.
So I I still think, I think it should stay if it's possible to
But if they want to have a drive through, that's far as I'm concerned, that's probably a benefit to the town and the business.
Exactly.
You're pulling trailers going in and out of the same entrance and exit, you know, one lane. That's your call to decide.
I think, Dave Miller, I think that would be foolish.
We're, we're not, we're, again, we're not talking about a supermarket. We're talking about a veterinary hospital.
Correct.
If you, if you go to Newtown.
Trailers, big death.
Yeah, if you go to Newtown, this is a good example, right on Main, the main road in Newtown, there's an antique railroad trestle right next door.
I know exactly where you're going and it's a
Right at the elbow. And I bet you there's a nine percent grade on that arcing driveway. And that is an enormous clinic. Now, they empty out onto onto the main road in and out daily. And they don't have a problem to bring it to Roxbury to talk about the scale of of business and the level of traffic we have on sixty seven. It doesn't make sense to re, to to change the the function of what we've got. Stewart's
Excuse me, Elaine, the Newtown Vet Clinic does cats, dogs, and small mammals like that. This will be horses, cows, more of a Roxbury type environment.
Yep, yep.
You're not, you know, trailers for cows and horses. You don't need them for cats and dogs.
Dave, may I ask, how many times do you bring your cows to the vet?
If if you have to get help, if you have to get health papers for a show, it could be two or three times a year.
Okay.
It could be every four H member and every other person that shows cattle or horses. I mean, obviously, the the owners of this property that are veterinarians feel there's a demand to have an ability to get trucks and trailers in to service these animals.
Okay, well, for for Doc sixty seven, sorry, what's his name right here? Doctor, sorry?
Carlson?
No, this are retired, retired.
Ement?
Yeah, Dr. Outwell was on sixty seven. His driveway wasn't any bigger.
Yeah, and they used to stop the cars across from my house so we could direct traffic while they backed the trailers in. So it was, but it was quite a fiasco and
I can't imagine taking a trailer into that thing and trying to turn it around.
I did, I did it. You did, Kim. Yeah, well, Stewart's got a lot of property.
Okay, so this is Kim. So if I can just bring this back down one, if I could, I am only questioning, not the drive through. I understand I drive a horse trailer. So yes, it would be very convenient for me to drive in one way and drive out the other. Many people can't back up. I can back up really well, but most people can't do that. So I I totally get that. That's not my question here. My question is just the, just about the about stating that parking facilities are to be located on the same lot as a building. That's really all I'm talking about. This, what you're, what you're talking about getting rid of this so that people can, they can go from one property to the they can go from one property to the other. It's really not talking about parking.
No, I disagree. They own both properties. The parking behind the small, the existing small vet building is for that small vet building. Parking for the new buildings will be for that. So the parking for each building will be inclusive to that property.
In other words, they will still be ordeal.
And Dave Miller here, and if you choose to park in one of the parking spots, you can walk to the other businesses. As long as the business owners don't take offense to you parking in their spots while you're visiting another one of the buildings.
But they, but.
I don't see any, there's no difference in the number of parking lots.
But each separate building and lot will, they will not reduce or increase their number of spaces. They will have their specific spaces.
That's correct. And it still comes down to our site plan. Yeah, okay.
If I may, say this one more time. Where else in our regulations does it state that parking be required on the lot that has the building? I mean, how do you?
I do not believe it states that anywhere in our regulations.
Okay, so my question is, why would we want to get rid of it? Because in essence, and I'm not talking about this particular business, this could be any business.
Right.
That there's a building and that they say, well, let's just go to the next-door neighbor and see if we can create parking at their lot instead. And then that building on that lot could be parking lot-free. Is that correct? That that could happen?
You baffle me. No.
Why?
I just, I, this seems to be rather simple. I don't know why it's being so complex and hard. I really wish Crystal was here. I told her that there were ten to this.
I'm, I'm here. I'm here, John.
Here, thank God. Speak up.
I didn't, I didn't want to speak up unless you, you pointed out. Yeah, we are, have every intention on providing the number of parking spaces on the property for that use. The only thing we need is a connecting driveway for proper circulation for trailers and to alleviate any type of conflict between, you know, people bringing a dog and a, and a person coming in with a horse to avoid any kind of conflict between the, the different types of circulation on the site, have an in and an out. But it is our intention to design it in a way that if that driveway were ever blocked because they were to sell the smaller property off, both properties could still function and be within the zoning regulations independently.
So I guess, this is Kim. So I guess my question is, why do we need to delete thirteen three two?
Right, I, I, we would be satisfying thirteen three two, so I don't, at this point, see a need to eliminate it. Unless you wanted to add a statement that said, you know, required parking facility shall be located on the same lot unless a shared parking situation was negotiated between owners and approved by the zoning commission. That would pretty much maybe satisfy everyone's concerns here. We strictly just need a pass-through, a paved pass-through so that we can negotiate trailers.
So this doesn't increase parking places. It is, like you just stated, it's just for a drive-through.
Yes.
So to require a drive-through, I don't see the need to delete thirteen three two. Because that's a very broad regulation that covers a lot of stuff. And if you want to just create a drive-through, if you want us to amend that to say with property owner's permission to just drive through, it doesn't change the number of parking places.
Do we have a regulation that says anything about drive-throughs?
No.
I think you can just do it. I mean, if my neighbor and I want to have a drive-through from our house to theirs, who's to say no?
This is almost something for ZBA because it's, can be almost called a hardship.
There's no such thing as a hardship, Jim.
I don't think so.
It would never fly.
Yeah, we assumed it would be a deed.
Why do we even have a ZBA if there's no such thing as a hardship?
I concur, one hundred and ten percent.
Yeah, well, that ain't gonna happen, John. Sorry.
No, ZBA is null and void. They can't do anything according to them in their, what the courts have ordered.
That's not quite right, but.
Oh, no, I'll take it to the back.
Why, why?
Getting a little carried away here.
Why is this a zoning issue at all? Is there any regulation that we say you can't drive? I can't drive from my house to my neighbor's house on a, you know, across the lawn? I mean, and pave it? This is just a, this is a two neighbors making an arrangement.
Yeah, I think, this is Kim, I think it gets, I, I like what Crystal said. This is, that's what I was kind of going toward, was just having an additional statement in there. And I, I think the way it was that she stated it would, I think, satisfy everybody and keep, because I think thirteen three two would really need to stay. And I'm thinking to the future. I'm not thinking about this one particular, you know, business, but it's the whole Zone D. And thinking what happens after there's no vet clinic or whatever.
I, I, I agree. I'd like to leave it there and just add to it, amend it. A few words, that's all it takes, and they can drive through.
Think that, I'd be, I'd be in favor of that.
Good.
Would it be exclusive to that property?
No, all properties in Business Zone D.
Yep.
Can, can create a pass-through with, you know, by, by mutual agreement of the abutters.
Correct.
And by, you know, approval by the zoning.
And approval of the zoning.
Then, then it really becomes shared driveway.
What, do we just talk without announcing who's talking?
I'm sorry, Dave, Elaine. I thought by now you'd recognize my voice. I apologize. Then it becomes shared driveway theory.
It doesn't go, it's John Cody, it doesn't go to the road. It'd be a.
Right.
Okay.
I like the word pass-through. Two adjoining pro, commercial properties can create a pass-through between their parking lots by petitioning the zoning board and their acceptance thereof.
That'll make it work.
Good.
Crystal, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
So if you're good with that, we can just change the wordage. Does this obviously requires a public hearing?
Yep.
Even if we were to delete it, we'd require a public hearing. Correct?
Kim, yes, I believe so.
Karen, are you with us?
It's a reg change.
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a reg change because you're changing that whole, that whole table too with the parking size. So yeah, absolutely would be a public hearing.
Public hearing, so we're not losing time by just amending what we already have without deleting it. And then we can go both ways. And it works for everybody.
I, I think somewhere in the regulation, it should say that this is an agreement between two abutters, and if either abutter in any time in the future wishes to undo it, they have that right.
Well, John Cody, easements and deeds would have to go through the town clerk's office. It would have to file with them.
I didn't hear that, John.
It's John. Anything like that would ha, I'm pretty sure would have to be filed with the town clerk as an easement or a deed right to. I don't even think you'd have to do a zoning change for that. Well, that's not my call. It's up there.
Well, getting back to thirteen three two, we might have to amend that to allow them to do so.
Well, like Crystal said, which I didn't seem to understand when we brought this up originally, we're not talking about parking anymore. We're talking about an easement to drive through.
Correct, yeah.
So thirteen is strictly parking.
Correct.
I don't think you want to encumber a few, fast forward to fifty or a hundred years, maybe somebody wants it, doesn't want to have to provide opportunity for the next-door neighbor to cross their property all the time.
It's done. I'm sure they could draft that up legally. That would.
Yeah, yeah, but it should be in there.
I think I agree with John. It sounds to me more, I put thought to this. This is an easement that is between the two property owners, and if they agree upon it, zoning is fine with it. We don't have to change a thing.
Yeah, I think so. John, I don't think so at all.
I think I would just turn this, leave thirteen, just leave that alone and let them work out their own agreement on where they're gonna drive.
Because, John, it would still be under our site plan review when they come in for their application anyway.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
That's clean.
This is Elaine. So do I understand we're looking to change thirteen point three eight?
Yes.
Yes, that was our main concern, was that the vast, the, the large dimension there for the driveway, which is eleven feet more than what we typically see, and just seemed to be a lot of coverage for a parking lot.
Right. So what is thirteen point three eight? We're just changing dimensions, correct? The size, thirty-five down to twenty-four, was that right?
Oh, that's correct. We're just talking about the main driving lane in the middle. We're gonna shrink that down some.
Correct, okay. And that requires public hearing as well, so.
That's John. Yeah, that's definite public hearing. We're just pulling out one graph and slipping in another.
Correct. Okay, that's not a problem. That encourages things.
Does that increase the number of parking spaces at all?
No, I've got, no, the, the parking total amount is all regulated under the regs. That doesn't even touch it. This is just the space between the cars.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to have the chart before us before we can schedule a public hearing?
It's John. I do believe Ju, Karen, Julie, you have that? You can pull it up.
The members have gotten that in their packet.
We've got it.
Okay.
It's, the, the existing chart is on the first page of that, that attachment, and the the one we're replacing with is on the second page.
Okay. It's right here. And it's not a, it's not a problem. It's not an issue. So I would like to move forward, and can we do this public hearing in January as well, or do we need two months?
No, it's gotta be two months.
Sixty-five days.
What one isn't two months? Because we had one of those.
Any reg changes, two months. Special permits are one.
Okay. So obviously, two months would be February.
Right.
Can we take this to public hearing in February?
Sure, we should be able to.
Okay.
If the wording that is accepted tonight is currently what you have before you.
It's just the chart. We're swapping one chart for another chart. Numbers.
Okay, because thirteen point three point two is gonna stay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's really just the two charts swapping, yeah?
Yep.
If everyone's good with the chart, the new chart, then, yes.
Yep. Tom, this is Elaine. I'm looking at page eight, Regulation eight C two, Parking Design Criteria. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. We're just, like John said, we're changing numbers.
Yes, Dave Miller, I'd like to make a motion that we swap the one form for the new form, the new graph that shows the twenty-four-foot drive-through area.
This is Kim. I'll second that.
Right, and drive-through area, it's like a, it's like an island, isn't it? It's the distance between the two rows of cars?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's an island.
Uh, it's John Cody. No, it's, it's not an island. It's just the lane between the two.
Okay, I got you.
They wanted twenty-four feet, we want eighteen.
Okay, all right, all right. Yeah, no problems. Been motioned and seconded to take this to, to accept this. First, we gotta accept this, and then we'll take it to public hearings. So it's been motioned and seconded to amend the dimensions for standard parking spaces and aisles.
Can I ask a question, Karen? John, the information above the chart, you're not including that, right?
The numbers, Karen, John?
The eight C two, you're not including that as part of the change.
We're just changing the graph of the totals.
The chart, okay.
Yes, the numbers.
May I ask, John, this is Elaine, does this affects everybody in Zone D?
Correct, yes.
And, and, and does it affect, does it change, does it change the other capabilities? Like, for example, does it change the, the plaza? Does it change the distillery? Does it allow them additional parking spaces?
Elaine, no, those are already approved and done in stone by the site plans that they submitted.
Okay, thank you.
We own it to that.
These are minimum dimensions. I mean, you can have as wide as you want, but this is the least you're allowed to have.
All right, moving on, it's been moved and seconded to accept this change. Do, I'd like to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we, we motioned and accepted the change in the numbers. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to send this to public hearing for our February meeting.
This is Elaine. I will move to schedule a public hearing for the month of February to approve the adoption of Parking Design Criteria for eight C two.
Do I have a second?
Kim.
Miller's second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of our.
Can we, can we correct that before we go further? We're not including eight C two.
We are not.
No. John just said that before.
Okay.
Only thing we're doing is swapping the charts out.
John, that's it.
I'm sorry?
It's John. That's correct. The charts, the numbers.
Okay, so.
So all of that language above, the language above the chart is not part of the change.
Okay, so.
Correct.
We're all in agreement on that? Okay.
We're all in agreement, but the chart happens to be part of eight C two. It's all one. If we're amending eight C two just because we're changing the numbers, you know, the chart doesn't have its own category. It's part of eight C two. So I think what we're amending is eight C two, but just the number portion. I was just speaking with Karen on that. I think the amendment is to eight point C point two Parking Design Criteria. We're just doing the numbers, but that's part of the criteria.
Okay, but that, that numbering wouldn't go, wouldn't be in coordination with what we have anyway. That's from another town, so.
Yeah, so this is Kim. So we're amending thirteen point three point eight, and we're, we're adding in, we're changing the, the numbers and using the information from the other town, which is
Okay.
C point two, and we're just. C point two, and we're just taking those numbers, not the, uh, the written information.
Right.
So we're actually amending thirteen three point eight.
Point eight.
Okay, cause we gotta have a number put to this.
Exactly. That's, that's a good way to state it. That's what we're amending is thirteen point three five.
Okay, yes.
So our public hearing, um, move for our public hearing for February, uh, to amend regulation thirteen point three point eight, um, and concerning the replacement of the chart.
Very good. Do I have a second? Yep.
Dave.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Alan seconds?
Alan, okay, thanks.
Um, all in favor?
The, the date of that hearing is February eighth, by the way.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to this? All right, we have a public hearing for February. Change the numbers. That's, that's good. All right. That was, uh, parking regs. Now, we have John, Z E O report.
Okay, um, yeah, we've been status quo busy. I can't believe the number of generators we're doing these days. Um, I think it's been like thirty in the last two months or something like that. Uh, big house coming in on Willowbrook. They are going to wetlands tomorrow. Should be approved. Should, if it did, they'll approve that on Wednesday. Couple other houses. It's been really, just really, really busy down there. Tons of wetlands concerns at the same time. Just tip of all scenes these days. Pretty much something up there.
All right. Chairman's report, I'm going to kind of coincide with John here a bit, um, on the Baker Road instant, instance, uh, uh, incident with the berm. Mark Low has been approved by the wetlands to put up a berm for his screening. And it was brought to my.
John Cody, can I interrupt for one second? I did reach out to Mark after the, I, this slipped my mind. After the wetlands commission granted him to that, I gave, told him he needed to start on it. He did start. There seems to be a pile of dirt there, but that seems to be the extent of that at this time.
Do we want to put a timeframe on this as to when the work needs to be completed?
Um, John, I, I think we need something to get established because it's, this has been going on since spring. And I, I just know it's not gonna go away till we finally get resolution to this. Yeah.
So what's, what's the commission think is a proper timeframe to have the property owner complete this berm?
Ninety days?
Uh, till winter. Get into the spring.
Yeah, Dave, Dave Mueller here. I think this time of year, ninety days would be a little bit optimistic. You know, I think, I think if you made it, uh, June would probably be a reasonable period of time.
That's funny. I'm, I don't have a problem. I was thinking thirty days.
I'm thinking next week.
Yeah. I mean, you got the equipment, you got the dirt, haul it in and dump it.
That's what I was thinking. He has the equipment.
Dave Mueller, you said you wanted to complete it and, um, doing it with frozen chunks. I mean, if he got after it immediately, that, that would, um, that could happen, but I don't know if that's a reasonable expectation to have it completed.
It does have to be seeded, so obviously it's not going to be seeded now.
Exactly.
June.
So with that in mind, because it's supposed to be seeded and, you know, with grass growing on it.
This is Kim. I'd say June first.
June first?
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, you got eight, you got ten to twenty-eighteen inches of snow coming, you know, I mean, I.
Oh, that's true.
I just don't see how that's gonna happen.
All right, all right. You got me. June first?
Divide it into stages and have the seeding, uh, you know, have completion dates where the dirt gets dumped in by January first or, or, uh, February first, and then the finished seeding has to be completed by June. That way at least the berm would be there.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, Dave. I have no problem with that. Otherwise, it's, nothing's gonna happen till May first.
Uh, did that, I think, yeah, because I'll, it's John Cody. I'll be hearing about that. I anticipate next week about the person who made the complaint. Um, again, it's been going on since spring.
Kind of been going on since we gave them the applica- the approval of the application.
That's true.
Um, all right, I like David's idea. Get, get that pile of dirt there in thirty days and have it seeded by June one.
Yeah, that.
I, I could throw that, throw a letter saying now. Certainly.
Sure. I mean, you can haul in, I don't care if it is frozen, it'll thaw.
Well, at least it's something we can show to the person who made the complaint. There's actually progress.
Yes, that's the important part. All right. Everybody agree?
It's John. Jim, I'll draft the letter and send it to you for you to take a look at.
Sixty days. I think thirty, you're in the middle of a holiday and New Year's.
Listen to you.
He's, he's working next door. I want him to finish. I'm looking at his work next door. I want it done.
All right. Okay. Yeah, John, put, put something on paper and, and, you know, try to light a fire.
All right, I'll send it to you for a review.
Okay.
Just Kim, you can say February first. It'd be better to have a date instead of thirty days.
February first is fair.
Yeah, nobody wants to do thirty days. All right.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
February twenty, twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty-two.
Um, item eight on our agenda, communications. We have the referral from the town of Washington. And I don't know if anybody took time to look through it, but as I looked through it tonight, they're meeting tonight as well.
Excuse me, Jim, it's John. Uh, they can't, they're postponed for tonight. I don't know.
Oh, they postponed?
Yeah, there's a cancellation or something like that. I don't, something happened somewhere. I don't know. I'll find out.
Well, what I would suggest, if you folks want to take a look at these referrals and just to stay abreast on what their neighboring towns are up to. And it sounds like if they postpone, we do have opportunity to comment. And, uh, but that's in your, in your packet. All right. The meeting calendar for twenty twenty-one. And I believe this has to be approved.
Um, Jim, it's Karen. Um, we approved it last month, but I'm just putting the final one out so everyone has it.
Oh, so it's been, it's all set to go?
Yeah, we approved it. We approved it last month. It's good to go now and it's, um, it's installed in the, um, town clerk's office, so.
Okay, we don't have to, we don't have to act upon that. With that being said, if there's anything that anybody wants to bring up as a commission to discuss, I think everybody's doing a great job and I appreciate all the discussion. And the more we talk about stuff, the, the better the outcome is. And, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, this is Elaine. First, I'd like to wish everyone a very, very safe and happy holiday. And we're all looking forward to twenty twenty-one.
This is Kim, and normally at this time, we'd be drinking wine together.
And having Christmas cookies.
Take a loan.
Next year.
First year we haven't done it.
We should have brought glasses tonight.
Have a good holiday.
Yeah, thank you.
Everyone stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, still need a motion to adjourn.
This is Kim. I motioned to adjourn the meeting.
Elaine, the seconds, or Alan seconds, whichever, whoever you want, Karen.
Okay. All in favor? Aye? Good night, all.
All right, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Uh, there she is, Karen. Here's Blue.
Oh.
So cute. Oh, my God.
Oh, look at her. She's so cute. What's her name?
Blue Willow.
Blue Willow. Hi, Blue Willow.
Beautiful.
Yeah. She's, she's a pop.
She's mouthing, yep.
Yep. All right, everyone.
All right, that's a good ending.
Yes, it is. Perfect.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.